I would like to call to order the regular CSD meeting for January tenth, twenty twenty-three at six thirty-three P. M. Thank you for joining us this evening. At this time, I would ask everyone to join us in a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. At this time, all are able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
..............................
Thank you. At this time, I will cede control of the meeting to Dr. Furman to accept nominations for Board Chair for the upcoming school year.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. Are there any motions from the Board for Board Chair?
I nominate James Herndon for Board Chair.
Any other nomination for Board Chair? All right. Board members, you have a ballot in front of you. Please circle the board member that you would like to vote in for Board Chair and pass those down to me. Thank you. Okay. I am pleased to announce that James Herndon has been voted in as Board Chair for the upcoming year. And I'm now going to... And oh, the vote is four to... Four to one absence. So four votes yea and one absent vote. We will now see the agenda over to Mr. Chairman Herndon to nominate our Vice Chair.
Okay. Here, I'd like to take... Are there any nominations for the position of Vice Chair?
I nominate Carmen Sultan for Vice Chair.
I second the nomination.
This time, board members, pass those ballots. All right, here we go. Back. I'm just taking long on that one. I'm honored to share that Dr. Carmen Sultan has been voted in as Vice Chair by a vote of four to zero. Congratulations, Carmen. I want to take a second to thank Jana Johnson Davis for her service as Chair for the City Schools of Decatur. Jana is an exemplary member of the Decatur community. She's an advocate, she's an educator, she's a mom, and she represents the best of what the City Schools of Decatur, and I mean that with my heart. We ran for Board together, and I've shared this story with people, that as a teacher in Fulton County, I went to the Board with an issue and was basically told to be quiet. I thought, there are not enough teachers and former teachers on the school board, and Jana and I bonded over that. School Board members, and I remember sitting in Bob Wilson's office, being trained on far more legalese that goes into being a school board member than the average community member will ever participate, and Bob said, you know, this is the first time I've had two teachers here. I can just skip these sections. Bob Wilson is not one to skip now. Our kids are better if you were a board member because of the work you've done the last year as Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, James. Thank you. Thank you so much. I really appreciate that. It has really been my honor to serve as School Board Chair over this past year. I really want to thank my fellow school board members for your confidence in me and my ability to lead. Your insight, collaboration, and commitment to the students of CSD has been inspiring. I look forward to the leadership of Mr. Herndon and Dr. Sultan, and, you know, I look forward to all of the great things that twenty twenty-three has in store for City Schools of Decatur. So thank you all again.
And there's a bouquet of flowers from the administration for you.
Oh, thank you.
All right. Board members, are there any revisions to the agenda this evening?
Yes, we are going to take off the Board Primer from the agenda this evening.
So can I have a motion to approve the agenda for this evening with the Primer moved back?
I move to approve the agenda with the adjustment as described.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Agenda for this evening is approved. Our next agenda item is the approval of the minutes from the previous Board meeting. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the December Board meeting?
I move to approve the minutes from the December Board meeting.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor of approving the minutes from the December Board meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
The minutes for the December Board meeting are approved. We have one spotlight this evening. Please welcome Mr. Eaton, Principal from Tally Upper Elementary, to the podium.
Good evening. Mr. Eaton, the Principal of Tally Street Upper Elementary. The opportunity to spotlight the great things that are going on at Tally Street. Seems like a perfect night. I want to congratulate Mr. Herndon. He was on Tally's initial SLT that helped us rule open. We were unable to have SLT member here tonight, but the house system that we're going to be discussing with you all is just one example of the work that the SLT has helped Tally, initiate and begin at Tally Street. So we couldn't have done it without their support. Before we let these amazing students introduce themselves, I am going to introduce some other staff that are here. We've got Kelly Nichols, she's our Assistant Principal. We have Lisa Reno, she's our STEM teacher. We have Jessica Young, one of our fifth grade teachers. We have Julian Farley, who is a fifth grade teacher, but also our Teacher of the Year. And then we have Kelly Sanders, who is also one of our fifth grade teachers. These staff members were crucial in the very beginning stages of implementing the house system, so we wanted to honor them as well. But now, like all of our Tally rallies and all of our houses and our totally student-led, so I'm going to let the students take over for the remainder of our time.
Dr. Furman, school board, and community members, my name is Ford Deloach. I'm in the House of Revere, and thank you for inviting our fellow house leaders and me here today.
Hi, everyone. I'm Lucy from the House of Nukamori, House of Kindness. And back in August, when I was sorted into my house, I believe that being sorted into this house is the best house for me.
Hello, my name is Mint, and I'm in the House of Unraca. We'd like to show you a video of what the house system looks like at our school, Tally Street. We hope you enjoy.
This year, Tally introduced their students to the house system. We hoped that this would give our students a sense of belonging and help to build community throughout the school. We asked to get sorted into one of the houses. Isabindi, the House of Courage. Unraca, the House of Unity. Nukamori, the House of Kindness. Amisad, the House of Friendship. Altruzmo, the House of Givers. And River, the House of Dreamers. Are you wondering how it's going so far? Let's hear from our students.
I love that specifically because all houses are different from the last, and everything else is in their own unique house. And we all have our own individual history.
I like that, you know, where it's from and the origins and how you can learn about the communities.
One of my favorite things about the house system is how we can compete with our friends in fun ways that we can, like speaking to those first-class students. And if you're going to your friend who's going, you're in third grade, she'll say that's in your house. Oh, hey, don't you know you're in my house?
Hi, my name is Vivian, and something I love about the house system is that it's a great way to bring people together and extend your friendship.
When I was at different schools, I really just had to learn this stuff, and I think the school is just like a school community.
In addition to just being a house member, students also participate in lots of other activities, including house meetings once a week, house activities that are held in and out of school, one community service project every year, and they help to plan school-wide celebrations that incorporate all of the houses that we can use to celebrate the house's culture. We also have opportunities for student leadership. These twelve fifth graders were elected by their peers to become the leaders of each of their houses. These kiddos help us to plan house meetings, they plan activities for their fellow house members, and they also help us to come up with activities and help to run our school assembly, Tally Rally. What's that? You've never heard of Tally Rally? Wow. Well, it's pretty much the WrestleMania of elementary students. Have fun at Philly and do all of our house cheer. Check out some of the stuff that happens at Tally Rally. These school board members and central office staff, you're always invited to Tally Rally on Friday mornings. We can have you spin our famous wheel, sort you into your house, and then you can join us in our amazing Tally cheer.
So, doesn't that look fun?
Hey, I'm Zohair, and I'm... Well, as you can see, I'm from Altruzmo, the House of Givers. And we are the most proud people at Tally, and we love our houses and everything about them, and it's the best.
You're probably wondering why Tally Street uses the house system. Well, there are so many great reasons for it, but we're going to tell you our favorite part about it. Oh, by the way, I'm Stella Rucker, and I'm in Amisad, the House of Friendship.
I like this, and I'm in the House of Altruzmo. And my favorite part about... 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 Our house system is... Because we can, like...
Why do we earn points? What's going to happen pretty soon if you guys earn a lot of points?
If we earn a lot of points, Coach Nichols and all the pistols and the pistols are going to get either taped to the wall or going to burp on the roof.
Oh, wow.
They have to earn it, so we'll see.
Nineteen thousand. My name is Drew Nichols. I'm in the House of Unraca, and I... We would be here all night if I was going to list everything that I love about the house system, so I'll just share my favorite thing, which is, I love that it gives students a sense of belonging, because you always belong with your house.
My name is Kat, and I'm the House Leader for the House of Isabindi. It's hard to choose, and not me to copy Alexis, I do not know if she can say this herself, but my favorite part of the house system is the points, because it encourages kids to do good things, because if you do good things during class, you get points, and over time it becomes a habit. Also, it introduces friendly competition, and that's why... That's my favorite. That's my favorite part.
Um, because I'm trying to make this as short as I possibly can, because my part's a lot longer. I'm Grace Monir, and clearly I am in the House of Amisad. I personally think that the cheers and chants make our houses unique. And, you know, because we're Tally, we had to tell y'all what the chants were, so do y'all mind joining me?
Yeah.
Sure.
So if y'all help me out, our first one is the Amisad cheer. A-M-I-S-T. A-D. A-M-I-S-T. A-D. Can y'all try it now? A-M-I-S-T.
A-D.
Yes. Okay, now, we're on Raca. O-N-R-A-K-E. A-A-A-A. O-N-R-A-K-E. A-A-A-A.
Maybe help it go.
Okay, ready? O-N-R-A-K-E. Next, Altruzmo. L-T-R-Y. S-M-O. L-T-R-Y. S-M-O. Y'all stand three, two, one, go. L-T-R-Y. S-M-O. Now, for Isabindi. This one's a lot easier. B-I-N-G-E-A. 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 Y'all stand.
We're going to count.
Three, two, one, go. B-I-N-G-E-A. 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 Now, I think my favorite album, I don't know, maybe Altruzmo or something? It's Revere. It goes R-E-B. R-E-B. E-U-R. R-E-B. R-E-B. E-U-R. Y'all think you can do that? We'll help you. We'll help you. Three, two, one, go. R-E-B. R-E-B. E-U-R. R-E-B. R-E-B. E-U-R. And for our most amazing... Nukamori. Y'all stand three, two, one. I think that sums it up. I mean, I'm going to go along with it. No, no, that's it. I come to Tally, Tally Chair.
Yeah, but not tonight. No, no. Hey, they're going to come to a Tally rally, we'll do that.
Yay.
All right.
Hi, everyone. I'm Helena, and I'm in Nukamori, House of Kindness. I know we can't stay here all night, but before we leave, do you have any questions for any of us?
No questions, but I just... I love the spirit that you all show with your houses. We had houses at my high school, and we still have a special bond with the folks thirty-five years later, but I wish we had cool names with important meanings like you all do. And we didn't have... Definitely didn't have the coolest here. So, thank you all for coming to share those with us.
I actually have a question for the board.
Now that your teachers are...
It'll be quick. It'll be quick. Y'all really think this could happen for the other schools? I've been stressing out all night, really thinking that might happen.
I'm going to tell you that we're not crazy here. We're not crazy.
So usually when we're up here, we'll say things like, we know the students are in good hands with their teachers, but I actually think the teachers are in pretty good hands.
Hi, I'm here with our House Leader, Amelia. And we'd like to thank you for listening to us, and we hope you join us to spin the wheel and see what your house is.
Thank you. Great. Thank you.
Now you guys have to... Actually, for...
Lot of energy.
I loved it. Oh, man. Wonderful.
Tough act to find their game. Yeah. As they move out, we will move on to public comment. Dr. Furman, do we have any members of the public signed up this evening?
Yes, we do. We have five people signed up for this evening.
As a reminder, for all speakers and members of the audience, the public comment portion of the meeting is a time for the public, so address the Board is limited to district parents, students, residents, employees, businesses, and organizations. The time limit for all speakers will be three minutes. Persons speaking during public comment will not be permitted to yield the floor or transfer unused time to other speakers. Comments during public comment should be addressed to the Board as a body and not individual members. Speakers should be courteous and professional. The Chair may terminate public comments that are profane, vulgar, defamatory, or disruptive. Speakers may not address confidential student or personnel matters, but may submit such concerns to the superintendent in writing. Members of the Board will not address persons presenting public comment or speak to the substance of any comment made during public comment. However, a member of the administrative team will follow up with person speaking at the Board meeting. Dr. Furman, will you call over?
I will. Our first speaker is Patty Formall.
Hi, I'm Patty Formall, and I am a sixth grader at Beacon Hill, and I am currently serving on the Dyslexia Task Course. This is in reference to Dr. Furman's superintendent comments from the December Board meeting at about the fifty-minute mark of the recording. My points here are intended to urge you, the Board, to continue to be vigilant in how your... How our student performance metrics are presented and shared, and should in no way imply complaints about teacher performance or quality. At the meeting, Dr. Furman indicated that last year's GMAT scores showed ninety percent of third graders as proficient readers. The ninety percent, in fact, reflects the reading status of third graders that scored at or above the Lexile threshold for determining if they should be promoted or retained. I understand that the reading status measure is mandated by law and provides a good year-over-year comparison, and that provides a lot of value. Although I agree that ninety percent of third graders meeting the threshold to be promoted is something to be proud of, it is troublesome that it was presented as ninety percent proficiency, which it is absolutely not. The label proficient means something on GMAT results, and it is not used to describe the Lexile reading status. In the National Reading Panel report published in two thousand, five pillars of reading knowledge were identified: phonemic awareness, phonics, vocabulary, fluency, and comprehension. The overall GMAT ELA scores are a much more accurate indicator of reading proficiency than reading status alone. And in looking at those recent scores for third graders, only seventy-two percent are proficient and above. That's not bad and better than the national average. And we know, and Dr. Furman noted in her presentation last month, that children who are not proficient readers by third grade are four times more likely to drop out of school. So this is a critical indicator of current and future successes. But if we look into the subgroups, we find that only thirty-eight percent of Black students are proficient and above versus eighty percent of white. Twenty-six and a half percent are at the beginning learner level. The risk of dropping out is even higher for this group. Twenty-nine percent of economically disadvantaged students are proficient and above. Less than a third versus seventy-six percent of advantaged students. If you are Black and disadvantaged, your dropout risk may be as much as thirteen times higher. To be clear, these disparate results are not unique to CSD, but I am sure we all agree that we can and should do better. In summary, characterizing our third graders as ninety percent proficient is a disservice to our students, particularly marginalized students, and perpetuates an illusionary sense of achievement, where there are successes to be sure, but also considerable work to be done in reading proficiency. You only have to peel back the top layer into the subscores and details to find our action areas. Please continue your diligence, dig into the details, ask questions so that we can appropriately celebrate our achievements and understand our areas of improvement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Lori Garrett, and she is speaking on Zoom.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yeah, hold on. Let's turn up those volume a little bit. Lori, oh, here we go. Okay, go ahead, Lori.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Lori Garrett, and I'm a resident of the Oakhurst neighborhood here in the city of Decatur, and I'm a parent of two children, one who is a student at Beacon Hill Middle and another who's a student at the Skank School. I'm speaking today to bring attention to the district's upcoming superintendent candidate interviews, and I humbly implore the Board to thoroughly evaluate finalists through an equity lens. I participated in the community conversation on September twenty-eighth, and I provided feedback through the survey as well that closed on October eighth of last year, because it's important to me to be engaged in, you know, these discussions and the only opportunities that the district provided for the community to influence candidate selections. I think that the selection of CSD's next superintendent is one of the most important acts of leadership in which this Board will engage. Your decision will affect every single student enrolled in the district currently and in the foreseeable future, and in particular, our most vulnerable and disadvantaged students. It will be your legacy, and it will either usher in an educational renaissance for our district or further condemn some of us and the future of our community. So if you can't tell, I am really worried. I'm afraid that some criteria and qualifications related to equity may not be prioritized, and I fear that a finalist may be chosen who will continue to fail many of our students and therefore all of our community in this regard. So I'm asking the Board to seek out someone with a proven record of success, expertise, and experience in equity, specifically a finalist who knows how to put into practice anti-racist equity and inclusion measures for all students within our district, someone who focuses on closing these opportunity gaps across race and socioeconomic status for all students within our district, someone who has a track record for successfully managing special education, and finally, someone who has been successful in planning, implementing, and evaluating evidence-based structured literacy and writing curriculum and programs so that all students in our district learn to read on time. I want to end by reading quickly a quote from a podcast interview of Kareem Weaver, a Morehouse man, who, having gone to Spelman myself, I thought he probably had something good to say. But seriously, he's a pioneer and national leader in the fight to improve literacy rates for all children. He says that literacy is a fundamental civil right of our time. So here's his perspective for school board members like you. Quote, "Everybody's got their thing." People have ideologies and beliefs, okay, fine, but guess what? If kids can't read, and I would add, and write, these institutions like our school district are going to fail. Thank you for the opportunity to provide this comment.
All right, our next speaker is Megan Swingle, and she is also on Zoom.
Great, can everybody hear me? Yes. That's great, thank you all. I'm Megan Swingle, I'm a CSE parent, and I have a fifth, sixth, and seventh grader. And I want to start by thanking all of our board members for your service. Education is a great equalizer, and literacy is the doorway to education. If our district is truly concerned about equity, why is data being presented to the board and to the public that misrepresents our reading proficiency rates? Because in reality, when you look at years' worth of CSE milestones, including the most recent, it is the students with resources and privilege who have the opportunity to become proficient readers in this district. Year after year, a disproportionate number of our black students and students who are economically disadvantaged are being left behind. In her public comments tonight, Patty Formwell shared the disparity in proficiency levels in third grade, where only thirty-eight percent of black students are proficient and above versus eighty percent of white students, and only twenty-nine percent of economically disadvantaged students are proficient and above. If you want to know how students are faring in reading proficiency by the time they reach middle school, the picture is even more bleak. These numbers are from the most recent milestones released in December. Only twenty-six percent of our black students at Beacon Hill and seventeen percent of our economically disadvantaged middle school students had proficient or above scores on the most recent milestones. I'd like to share one more set of numbers that I have not heard presented at a board meeting or with the public yet. Acadience reading is the literacy screener given up to three times a year in K through two. Last year, at the end of the school year, approximately forty percent of our black students in kindergarten, first, and second grade were below benchmark on Acadience reading assessment measures. These below benchmark numbers on Acadience matter for the trajectory of our students' lives and their chances of becoming fully proficient readers. The Acadience handbook says, "Students with below benchmark scores likely need core instruction coupled with strategic support targeted to their individual needs in order to meet subsequent early reading goals. For students with well below benchmark scores, the overall odds are only ten to twenty percent for these students to achieve early reading goals without intensive support and intervention." As a district, we must be honest about who is being afforded the opportunity to learn to read and who is not. We need a radical culture shift in this district away from framing data to suit a story that we want to tell and that we all wish were true, towards accepting the full scope of data as it is and committing to doing something about it openly, honestly, and with full accountability. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next speaker is Dan Basterville, and he's in person.
Good evening, I am Dan Basterville, and I'm a parent of a Decatur High School student. I'm also on my mother's side, the son, grandson, great-grandson, great-great-grandson, and so forth, American-born Jews and those who immigrated to America from Europe and Poland. Many of these relatives face significant discrimination for being Jewish, such as fleeing the pilgrims, which forced them to emigrate due to fears for their safety, and in the case of my grandfather, to change his last name from Olitsky to Wallet so he could get work to support his family. This is a long-winded way of saying that I am Jewish, and while admittedly not the most observant, I had a bar mitzvah, I recognize all the Jewish holidays, I come from a family that has lived the Jewish experience, and the discrimination that can come with that, including at least one relative who's killed in the war. And thus, I am keenly aware and appreciative of the history, culture, and hardships of the Jewish people, and most importantly for this conversation, the horrors of the Holocaust. As an aside, I also worked with the Anti-Defamation League to pass the Georgia Hate Crimes Law in the twenty-twenty legislature. So I think I'm in a pretty good place to comment on the appropriateness of DHS students' recent performance of The Sound of Music. In my opinion, it was all a hundred percent appropriate. Bravo to all who were involved in production. And to steal a comment I read online, quote, "I'm a Jewish Decatur resident, I haven't spoken to a single Jewish friend who's offended by the use of the swastika in this production." It had been sanitized out of the play, that would have been way more concerning. As another commenter pointed out, with each generation, fewer people learn about the Holocaust. In real time, we're seeing to flee to antisemitism and Holocaust denial in our country, around the world. Theater, art, and literature are excellent media for young people and adults to learn about the Holocaust and other atrocities," end quote. While Jews, like any other group, are not monolithic and do not all hold the same opinion, I totally agree with what I was told. Don't doubt for a second that the image of the swastika seen by Mrs. grandmother, who was a Holocaust survivor, triggered painful memories, and I sincerely feel for her. I know that every time I see a swastika, I ball up with anger. However, I will say again, I believe sanitizing it out of the play would have been much more concerning. The history of the Holocaust is dark and very upsetting, especially to survivors and their families. But most Jewish people I know, when a play like The Sound of Music is performed, we want the story told as it was meant to be, swastikas and all. Thus, I believe the statements from the district's administration, while maybe with the best intentions, were totally inappropriate and off-base. I am quite certain that those statements were not based on feedback from the greater Decatur Jewish community. The school system is concerned about equity issues of concern to its Jewish families. I'm sure the community would like that conversation to discuss issues such as why it allows testing and other important events on Jewish holidays. Closing, I'm a hundred percent in support of stamping out racism and discrimination in all and any of its forms in this school system and everywhere it rears its ugly head. But we do a disservice to this mission when we start to censure theater, art, and literature that serves to educate on the history of discrimination towards the people, as this play did. I hope going forward, if this administration recognizes the error of its response, it will take this as yet another teachable moment in regard to how it reacts to instances of perceived or actual bias and discrimination.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Here we have one more public. Sure, please.
Good evening, board members. Uh, Jana, I was here when you became chair. I just remember that, and I think, I don't think that was the last time I was here, but I remember that I was here that day that you uh you assumed the chairmanship, so congratulations, Jana. And big up to everybody on here. I sent my comments via email, but I want to uh read it again. Um, I want to speak about the outcome of the use of the racial slur by the physics teacher, right? Um, the twenty-first century is dramatically different from the twentieth century. Uh, individuals anywhere in the world are able to earn money, start businesses, create jobs without ever meeting employers, customers, or business partners in person. Our focus as a school district should be preparing our students for those opportunities, right? Freshmen physically would be introducing students to the Hadron Collider and the advances in nuclear fusion reactions. I'm a little bit of a geek. Honestly, there's a new way of energy. There's less, and there's more energy produced from the fusion reaction now than the amount of energy before. Twenty years from now, it's going to be nuclear fusion. Twenty-five years from now, I would love our students, black students, brown students, white students, to be at the forefront of that, right? I I feel like this was a distraction, really. It's just taking us off what's bigger. And then now, we've suspended or reassigned the principals, the director of career and technical education has to move, we're doing a superintendent search. Again, we've lost focus. We just have people in different places, plans can't go. How many students are going to be dropped? We paid a third party to investigate. Money that could be spent on academic endeavors, right? I just, I I just don't see any win. I don't see any win whatsoever in this. Honestly, I just, I feel like we dream, let's dream about tomorrow. If we prepare black students, white students, brown students to lead, to lead industries, we will win. And then what annoys me is the pressure, this always under pressure for personnel matters. Somebody move, I I would not have moved to Decatur if this was me. Looking, wow, wow, every year they've got something going on, somebody's been fired, someone being moved, something. I just don't think it gives us a good look. So my my comments there, that I I hope we reverse these things, and subtlety is good and dreaming, vision, that's that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to all members of the CSD community for sharing your comments this evening. Um, at this turn, I'll turn the agenda over to Dr. Furman, who shared superintendent comments this evening.
Thank you, Esther. Um, you can go to the next slide. You're doing that for me? Okay, just a couple comments this evening. Uh, just want to wish everyone a happy new year, welcome to two thousand twenty-three. Um, congratulations to Chairman Furman, I've got to get used to saying a different name. Um, and Vice Chair, Dr. Sulton, thank you for stepping up to these roles, it's so important. And thank you, um, Jana Johnson Davis, for your service, you've been an amazing board chair, and I have learned a great deal from you. Um, I'm going to update the board on the Vision and Mission Task Force, um, as well as, uh, I'm not, oh, other than sharing, I've completed, uh, my courageous conversations about race practitioner affiliate training. Um, it was a very deep learning for me on equity work and how to center work at the district level around equitable outcomes for students and lifting that piece. Um, and I've learned a great deal through that course, and I'm excited to implement the strategies and the learning that I've had as we move forward with our policy work as well. Uh, so I do just want to update the board where we are with the vision and mission planning. Um, so I've been sharing this slide several times in the past, and we are, um, moving through the strategic planning process in a timely manner, and we are on on um on track to finish everything, and I will review the strategic, uh, the charter renewal contract later tonight. Uh, but I did want to update the board, as part of that update, uh, for the strategic plan is to update our vision and mission. Um, and what I have decided to do is, um, engage a mentor of mine to help facilitate leading that process. Um, she is someone that I've known for a long time, does leadership development, oh, you go to the next slide, Esther. Um, so she's going to help us facilitate that work. So her and I and a small team are going to have an initial kickoff meeting, planning all of the meeting dates, getting those stuff set up. She's got a community-wide survey to issue, um, she's going to lead for her and her partner actually are going to lead four stakeholder groups to look at the survey results, analyze those. Uh, we're going to pull students that are already in several leadership positions, such as student government, the Black Student Union, and any other kind of fitting organizations of student leaders at this time. Uh, we're going to use our Teachers of the Year for our teacher stakeholder group. We are going to pull a section of, a cross-section of administrators from, um, school level and, um, district level to sit on that stakeholder group meeting. And then we are going to pull a group of community and parent members, and we're really going to focus on our SCLT members, um, parents to sit as the parents to participate in that task force. The end product of this will be several things. Um, they will be building a graduate profile for our students in CSD so that everyone will know, here's what we want our graduates to achieve or exemplify by the time they graduate, um, City Schools of Decatur. And then we're also have an updated vision and mission process. We'll also be inviting one or more board members to participate in this so that that information, um, from the board is also included in this process. So that's where we are, we're on track, like I said, with the strategic planning process, with the charter, and this will feed nicely into that work as we move through the rest of that process. Um, and that's concluded my comments for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Furman. Um, we now move to the chairs' report for this evening. Um, first, I'd like to give an update on the superintendent search. The application for CSD superintendent closed on December eighteenth after being open for about seven weeks, and the Georgia School Board Association received thirty-four applications. Uh, GSBA will vet the applications and present them to the board later in January during a specifically set executive session. We are waiting for GSBA to confirm the date of that. Uh, a Winona Park update, Dr. Furman gave the Winona Park Crew, Operations Department, Winona Park neighbors, Fire Department a shout-out Friday in our follow-up. I want to make sure the board also shares in the kudos to these group of people. If you didn't hear, Winona Park had some sprinklers burst on Christmas Eve, mini indicator did, and as everyone does in CSD indicator, they all quickly jumped to action. Neighbors called the fire department, they shut off the water, Sergio quickly assessed the situation, hired a recovery company. Uh, the Winona Park Crew did what our school employees do best, they jumped in, figured it out, what is best for the staff and students. So shout-out and thank you to the Winona Park, um, family. Uh, Glenwood, I was pleased to attend their Bring Your Parent to PE Day. Uh, before the break, Coach Meg at Glenwood Elementary made fun and fitness a family affair. Uh, she invited both parents and grandparents to join during, join their students during PE. I was exhausted. The parents and kids had a ball playing parachute games. Parents remembered you in school. Uh, there will be another parents and PE event in the spring. Way to go, Coach Meg, uh, in Glenwood. Students and family for promoting physical activity and just like a healthy lifestyle, including your kids. Uh, Sidekicks, uh, they created last school year to help build connections and community within our AAPI, ADIPA, CSD community and beyond. They kicked off year two of its program before the break with Glenwood and DHS, bringing together forty-one of our AAPI, ADIPA kids together. This year, they were able to group the kids by specific identity, South Asian, Indian, Pakistan, Taiwanese and Cambodian, Japanese and Korean, Filipino and Pacific Islander, Vietnamese and Chinese. The high schoolers felt strongly that this would be a positive new development for the Sidekicks. We look forward to hearing more about the great things the Sidekicks do. Um, DHS Bake for Good, the DHS culinary students baked and packaged breads to donate to the Sycamore House through the Bake for Good program. The breads were delivered by the DHS J-Rotsey on December sixteenth. The audiovisuals class also made a mini documentary of the process, a really collaborative way-to-go Career Tech students. Uh, Glenwood also kicked off its Read-A-Thon last week with an author visit, Discover the Magic. Special guest author and former George Bulldog and New England Patriot Malcolm Mitchell visited Glenwood with the help of his team and a fantastic Glenwood audience. They put on an engaging magic show to get students excited about reading and learning. Uh, my daughter came home and said that she was a fan of the Patriots, and I denied her the dinner. So, thank you, Malcolm Mitchell, job well done, awesome visit. Um, Google Workspace, CSD's success in implementing and supporting Google Workspace and Chromebook over the last few years is being captured in a video case study for consideration by other school districts. The DHS computer science teacher, Deidre Pierce, enterprise applications coordinator Keith Lay, and chief information officer, Esther Melton, uh, met last week and spoke to our successes with these tools for the case study, thanks to all involved. Finally, I I want to leave, uh, with a comment about the racial slur in the high school and the ongoing situation. Uh, the board is aware of what this at the high school and the, as well as the community conversations that are occurring. Um, we look forward to repairing the harm that was done and as a board, developing the policies to be put in place that the better, to provide better clarity and direction when unfortunate incidents do occur. Um, we always continue to support student and staff feedback and involvement when incidents do occur. That concludes my comments. Yes, please.
Um, so just very quickly, I am, uh, a Georgia Tech alumni, so with great, great pain and difficulty in my heart, I want to say to members of our community, dogs, congratulations on the national championship support.
Boy, he's not even up for election.
I think I just voted myself out.
Um, okay, uh, we now move to consent agenda items, which include the personnel
So just very quickly, I am a Georgia Tech alumni, so with great, great pain and difficulty in my heart, I want to say to members of our community, dogs, congratulations on the national championship.
Boy, he's not even up for election.
I think I just voted myself out.
Okay, we now move to consent agenda items, which include the personnel reports, school nutrition and monthly financial reports. May I have a motion to approve consent items one through three?
I move to approve consent items one through three.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The consent agenda items one through three are approved. The board has several action items on the agenda for this evening. Dr. Furman, do you mind presenting the discussion and action items at this time?
I do not. So the first discussion item and an action item for the board is our charter renewal contract. Mr. Melton, I hooked up my screens, I think I'm ready to present. Do you want to, there we go. Okay, so. Okay, so go ahead to the next slide, please, sir. So just wanted to give the board an overview of the community input and where we are with the charter application. We were able to use all of that great data that we gathered through the SWOT analysis for strategic planning from the community to make sure that we identified what are the strengths or what does our community see and want to keep as part of where we're going as a school system and our new charter and strategic plan. We also were able to use that data to identify what are some opportunities for growth in our, as we move forward? And also what are things that we have in our community that we can utilize to better our school system? And I'll say the one thing that I realized going through and analyzing the SWOT analysis is as we kind of develop trends and themes, the community and the strength of our community was overwhelmingly a huge response about how we need to tap into our community to leverage success at our schools. We then used the planning, the goals that were set by the planning team to look at how are we going to align areas of innovation in our charter along with what is happening in the, in the strategic plan? And the two areas that we really focused on in the charter to look for flexibility is the goal area of success in all areas for students and then recruiting and retaining high-quality staff. The action team then took those, as well as we, we took the information then from the action team as well as the student advisory team to identify what would some key initiatives be that would require flexibility for us to implement those with fidelity. I also met with our system charter leadership team to gather input from them on what is in working with our school governance teams, what needs improved? And then part of this whole process is to look at what are some of the additional governing authorities that the board could delegate or provide opportunities for engagement with the SDLT? So all of that to say, we reviewed all that information, we've kind of talked through things and our first innovative feature is reading is justice for all, and this ties to the student success in all areas. And what we're working on here is identifying some partnerships with some specialized tools that can support CSD to ensure that every student is receiving the intensive reading instruction that they need, Esten, you go to the next slide, that they need to become skilled readers, not just at the end of third grade, but throughout their progression in high school. We want to make sure all of our students are reading at or above grade level and have the opportunity to get those supports within our school system. So we're looking at various flexibilities and various things that we can implement and partnerships so that we can make sure that that is happening within our school walls. Our second innovative feature is going to revolve around staffing and how we staff our school system. So this ties to our strategic goal plan of attracting, attracting and retaining high-quality staff. And one of the major things we're looking at here is what are some alternative pathways that we can help teachers move from college graduates to certification, or how do we also attract more people into the teaching field? So we are partnering with some local universities on developing an alternative certification that would be kind of a middle ground in between a paraprofessional and an actual classroom teacher to provide that extended runway for people interested in the teaching profession to get their toe in the water a little faster. We're also hopeful that this kind of middle certification could possibly be used for students that are completing their student teaching so that they can get paid while they're doing their student teaching. So we want to make sure that we are taking barriers away from individuals selecting the teaching profession as a career. I want to make sure that we're supporting them with that. Also looking at opportunities to create a flexible schedule and calendar for teachers that are looking for that type of flexibility. And then another one is looking at multi-year contracts. One of the things that the Georgia title says is you offer one-year contracts, but we can waive that as a school system and say, we want to offer contracts that are beyond one year and looking at assigning or providing teachers with a retention bonus at some of those critical years. So they will want to return and come back to work with us in City Schools of Decatur. The last innovative feature that we're embedding in our charter is again tied to student success in all areas. And here we want to make sure that we have increased personalized. We want to increase the opportunity for our students in every grade level to participate in experiential hands-on learning, to apply what they're learning in the classroom. All that content knowledge needs to be applied in a hands-on, problem-based approach and we want to make sure that it's happening beyond. Some of our schools do a great job, some of them are implementing this, but we want to make sure that they have that opportunity to do that in every single class and every single grade level. Similar to what Kunlee was sharing, like we want our students to be thinking creatively, solving problems for the future so that they can take, fill those really high, high-level positions. Also looking at opportunities for flexible. Incorporate enhanced internships. We, as we kind of looked through the data, we have so much opportunity in our community to provide internships. So we need to make sure we're engaging with our community and allowing students to participate in internships and getting some flexibility on their schedules so that they can leave, go do those internships and really learn about and apply what they're learning in their classroom and thinking forward. And the last area is we're looking at exploring additional career pathways and, and expanding it beyond high school. So right now, we really only focus on career pathways eighth grade and above, but we want to provide students even in, you know, in our elementary schools with some opportunities to explore career pathways so that they are able to start thinking down that road as they matriculate through our school system. So this is the innovative feature that we are exploring and leave included in our contract. The other area that the board needs to kind of weigh in on as we move through our contract is our governance matrix. So according to the state in our application, there are five areas of governance that the local school governance teams are provided authority to govern. What I've included here is the five areas and there's two on the next slide, is the minimum authority that we have to provide for our local school governance team. Then we have to describe how and when we will do the minimum, which is what's listed there. And then what are some additional authority that we may ask for our local school leadership teams to implement? So we haven't changed anything in the minimum from what our SLTs are currently doing. We feel like that is the minimum. We've actually gone above the minimum in many areas. So some of the stuff in the additional column is not a change because it is, it's what the SLTs have been doing in their feedback. They had not asked for additional governance, so we wanted to honor what they had inputted there. So we do offer our SLT members a seat at the interview table for every school-based position. And that's already happening and it's something that we've been implementing for a while and the SLTs were very thankful that they have that opportunity to provide input at the hiring table. Financial decision and resource allocation at the local school level, our SLTs review the school budget, they provide input, they review staffing allocations, curriculum costs and help the, you know, give the principal feedback on how they allocate money at the local level. But then what we decided is we really wanted to engage and with the input of the SDLT is how are we capitalizing on the use of our system charter leadership team, which is one member from every SLT serves on the system team. And this group acts for additional, at least annually, to have an opportunity to provide enhanced feedback that the board can consider as they approve the budget every year. So if that is an area of governance that the board is open to, we can implement that and move forward with adding that extra layer of input from our SDLT. Curriculum and instruction, currently our SLTs are all invited to provide input on district-wide curriculum resources. And then we use these resources to support our innovative features. But the SDLT was asking, or the SLT, SDLT was asking for additional opportunities for the local school leadership team to have a review and approve any instructional materials that are above and beyond what we use as a school district. And we know that would require some training, so they are very well-versed in our equitable decision-making tool as well as the tool we use to determine, is this culturally responsive curriculum material? I think we are willing to do that if it means that our SLTs can have an additional voice when it comes to reviewing curriculum resources for our schools. And the last two areas of governance in the governance matrix are monitoring the achievement for our schools. Every year, our SDLTs currently are working with the school principals to review and vet their school improvement plans. However, the SDLT again would like to help provide input to the district through reviewing and providing feedback on the district improvement plan goals and progress. And then also be, have the opportunity to provide feedback on the five-year strategic plan. The fifth area of governance is about school operations. When the SLTs meet, they're privy to what are some needs in the building and are able to advocate for those. So two areas of additional authority that have already been in use with our SDLTs and SLTs is one, first of all, the SDLT provides feedback to the administration so that we can fine-tune our district calendars before we bring those to the board. Our SLTs are also providing approval of field trips that are being requested at the local level. The addition that we are asking for the board to consider is, we tweaked this when we met with our SDLT after also getting some feedback from the board as I talked through this, is that the SDLT would like to review the dress code annually and submit suggested changes to the superintendent for consideration. They want to be a part of that process, they want to provide that input and be able to review what the dress code is and give suggested changes or improvements for the dress code. So those are the two big things that the board would want to discuss and I would open this, open the floor for discussion on innovative practices as well as the governance matrix.
I had a question about the innovative, innovative.
Innovative feature.
Thank you. A couple of questions. What is the, are you able to share who the local university is that we're paired with to create that?
We are working with a couple right now. We're also exploring another one that we may work with. So until we kind of finalize those partnerships with MOUs, I don't want to share that information just yet. But we are focusing on local universities or a university that is willing to provide services here for our staff so our staff doesn't have to travel.
Okay. And then can you say a little bit more about the school within the school concept? Is there, if you can tell us just a little bit about what you envision that looking like, is there a model of?
Not aware of any school within a school model specifically designed to address struggling readers, but they do very frequently have school within a school models for the IB programs at various schools. They have dual-language emergent programs, they do some of those school within a school models. So we're going to be looking at those as just a jumping off point. We have been talking with one school that supports students with dyslexia, a private school, to talk about what is this program and look for them? How could we potentially train our teachers to support those students? And then we're also just looking at what does that look like for us as a school system with the numbers? So do we need to do a school within a school at one school and pull all those students to, let's say, one elementary? Or maybe we need two, one on each, you know, one in the class, talent cluster, one in the phase cluster? So we're still in the very much beginning phases of that design process. And we'll be working through the next three or four months to kind of iron out all of those details. But we do want to make sure regardless of what the program looks like, that we are putting reading at the forefront of our strategic planning and charter process and seeing what kind of flexibility we would need to make sure we are giving students that intensive reading support that they need.
And is this application available for the community to?
Yeah, yeah. It's linked on, right now on the agenda for the web, for the board meeting. We'll also publish it out for, for public consumption and the SDLT members also received a copy yesterday.
I had a couple of questions about the goals.
Oh, sorry, I didn't put the goals on here.
Oh, no, we were just looking at them. Is that not what we were looking at, those five?
Oh, those are the, the governance matrix.
Governance matrix.
Yeah, sorry.
Are you naming the wrong terms?
Okay.
First of all, I guess the personnel decisions, I mentioned this just to be clear, what we're talking about is hiring personnel decisions. That's not discipline, that's not anything else, right? So that's just kind of in the onboarding or hiring. And then the, the one that we had a conversation about and I wanted to kind of have a discussion with the board about was the last one around dress code.
Yeah, go to one more slide, Esten.
So I appreciate some of the changes that we, that was brought up here. I had referenced, I was a little bit concerned about the equity impact of having inconsistent dress codes. That, are we still thinking with the way that it's framed here that it would be a single unified across the district dress code? Or that each particular, assuming that they get superintendent approval, each particular school would have, could potentially have its own dress code?
We talked about keeping it at grade band. So K5, the strong sentiment when we talked with SDLT was that they have a uniform dress code, K5, that six, eight and nine, 12, high school, middle school start together and then see if there's opportunities or maybe the high school to have some variation based off difference in the middle school.
But that there is a administration level approval of any change? Okay, I'm much more comfortable with that. Thank you.
I didn't, I didn't appreciate from this wording that they were necessarily asking that each SLT would have the ability to review their own dress policy, but that they would give input to SDLT and then it would ultimately come to you. That was in my interpreting.
Yeah.
So I didn't, I don't see that they were asking that, you know, O-Curse would have their own dress policy. They would have their own. That's not the way I was.
No, no, it's going to be, we, they were very, and this was great input from them as well, is they want, they were very, I would say, in agreement that they wanted a singular dress code for all elementary schools. And that when it comes to the point of reviewing, we would pull our elementary SDLT members together and have them review it together as a team.
So ultimately, does the superintendent receive all of these recommendations? And then ultimately, the superintendent gives their approval of that?
Correct.
Okay. Well, so I was concerned about curriculum and instruction and the SLT wanting to have approval on the previous.
Go up one slide, Esten, go back one, there you go.
You know, when a school wants to go above and beyond, so, you know, I'm, I'm just concerned about if teachers are content experts decide that this is what we need to go above and beyond, I'm, I'm concerned about, you know.
You don't want to stifle that?
No.
Yeah, and I'm.
And I'm concerned about the risk of, you know, folks taking that away from our content experts. But in this case, does the superintendent, again, have final approval in, in terms of what the SLT recommends? If the SLT, can they say we don't?
I think that, I want to clarify, the thinking around this was if the PTA says, not for individual classroom, but PTA, PTA says, hey, we're going to pay for the O-Curse to buy this supplemental curriculum resource for all of our students, we would want that to go through the SLT. We wouldn't, but an individual teacher, you know, if Ms. Burnett says, hey, I found this great resource, I want to use it, they're still open to that. We're talking about, this really is targeted for if PTA or if the school principal wants to use local funds to purchase something that would be used school-wide.
So I guess, I mean, to second Jana's question, the scenario would be if the school-wide teachers, principal combined or curriculum experts combined say, yeah, these are good supplemental materials, does the SLT have a veto over that?
Oh, no.
Okay, so how would that be worked in so that, yes, we seek their input, but that if the experts are saying it's appropriate, there's not a veto?
I understood, yeah.
Yeah, that's my, that's my, because you, you know, even when the PTA wants to fund something, they're getting those suggestions from the teachers on what, you know, what they need and they're, they're to support and so.
Okay. So I think we just need to fine-tune the wording there so that's clear that it is input and feedback, not they are the final approval.
Yep.
Right, because I don't, I think the caution might be you don't want there to be a difference in curriculum between one school and the next, that if you have a. in curriculum between one school and the next, that if you have a SLT that has one thought process, one set of supplemental curriculum, and the question, and then it doesn't went on a part, say.
Yeah. And I don't want, I don't want it to be that teachers think that this is a great program and a great idea, and then the SLT.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah. Okay. Now, thank you for raising that, because that didn't cross my mind, because I do believe our teachers are the experts and have a good sense of what is going to be effective in their classroom. Okay. So we'll clarify that, that that's more feedback and input than it is approval.
I want to say on the last paragraph in the recommendation and the financial decisions of resources, where it calls for annually and as needed, the SCLT members provide feedback on district-level budget and provide feedback to the board. I've said, and I hold it pretty strongly, that that SLT structure for our charter is very poorly understood and very underutilized in our community. There are many complaints and suggestions and recommendations we get as board that is far more suited to this SLT to provide feedback like that. And I love that idea of pushing that forward where the SLT has a voice to say, you know, own these district-level policy things, here's what we're seeing at school, here's what we want you all to be aware of as the board, and to use that as a system to draw attention of the fact that these SLTs exist. If they give veto power based, well, approval for field trips, I don't think most parents appreciate that that exists in our district. I would love to see more of that from the administration side to empower that group to provide feedback in very well-defined ways.
Yeah, and that came up as an area of improvement that the SCLTs were asking, like, how do we help, how do we as a district help facilitate that communication, that knowledge base and training for our SLT members, so that they're aware of, oh, this is what that means, so that they can be more effective governance members at their local school level?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought I heard in your question, James, too, is a stronger cultivation between the connection of the SCLT and the board itself, between us, right? And whether that, I know we've received presentations in this format from SLTs, but I don't think we've ever just sat down and had a conversation with the SCLT or what, and so I think that's probably a work session is what I'm suggesting, but maybe there's a couple set points over the course of the year where there is a more free-form conversation between those two bodies.
I would love to see the SLTs themselves write presentations that are publicly digestible to the board, that this is what we're seeing at Beacon Hill, these are the things that we're dealing with, and that informs policy for us.
Hey, if there are any comments, there's two action items pending for the board, so if the board's comfortable with me making that change to the governance matrix?
And what was the one about field trips?
So currently, the school, SLTs are one of the approvers for field trips.
I'm a little concerned about that one.
So that one's, that's old policy.
Yeah, that's been in, that's been a part of the policy, and that was put in place a couple years ago, just so that it wasn't, we were making sure we were flushing out any local school concerns about field trips, and they were vetting the field trip as a valuable part before we jumped off. And it's, it's not every field trip, it's field trips that are like, is it overnight field trips? I think, I think it's only overnight field trips.
Well, then maybe we should say that.
Okay.
So the SLT has to approve overnight field trips?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Back to your earlier concern, though, Ms. Johnson Davis, about the SLT having the ability to veto what the teachers and the other experts think. Like, I'm okay with having a little stronger language here than on another point, but I do believe that passionate teachers and experts should be empowered to override a veto by the SLT. So if there is some way, again, the scenario would be that the teachers or the experts that believe this is an appropriate or necessary trip get turned down by the SLT, that there be some way to have that decision reviewed?
Yeah.
And potentially?
Like an appeal?
Yes.
Okay.
Like, there's a, yeah, like, I don't want us to set up a structure where?
That makes sense.
We're actually.
Right. Because the field trips, they're just an extension of the curriculum.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Got it.
There's also a little known fact, the SLT meetings, they can kind of make some public comments just like they do here, so I think if, you know, parents had a concern about the Tybee field trip at Telly Street and thought it wasn't going to pass, or that was a word on the street, they should go and make comments. You know, I think that some of the, some of the burden here is going to be for us to be, to make, to be, to be clear in our communication that this is what the role of the SLT is. I think there's so much misunderstanding about what the SLTs do, there's so much ignorance about how the role they play at each individual school, they're the local, kind of, they're like the local government, and the principals are there, too, and they, they're very engaged. Like, there aren't.
Okay, so with two tweaks, one to field trips and one to curriculum and instruction, were those the only two?
What was the one that you brought up on?
It was the, it was the dress code, but the way that it's been adjusted, I think I agree with.
Okay. So if the board is in agreement, then we would do a motion to approve the charter contract renewal pending those changes, and I can make sure I share that language with the board before we sign and submit things, but that'll take this, let us move this down the road.
Do I, motion to approve the charter amendments with the edits suggested?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. At this time next year, James, you'll have.
Yes, so our next item for board discussion is the board requested to, for the superintendent to draft a whistleblower policy. I've provided the board with a draft of that policy for discussion.
Well, when I reviewed it prior to the meeting, I liked that it had, we added the steps that were clearly laid out so folks would know, you know, where to start and where to go next in that process.
I don't know if we need to formalize this in the policy itself, but I would certainly want this to be an example of one of the policies that we explicitly review on an annual basis.
Okay.
So that we're making, I suspect we'll get feedback about how well it works, and we'll get a lot of suggestions about how to continually improve it, so I just want to make sure that we're, this is one that's kind of top of mind to revisit as we implement it for the first time.
Yes, okay.
Is that, I mean, is that something that we need to, I don't think that's something we need to amend, is that, or that's just?
No, I'll just make a note that we add that on an annual review basis, at least for the first couple of years it's in, in effect, and then it can go on our normal, I think it's, we will eventually decide the revision schedule, which is like a three- or a five-year revision schedule, but there are certain ones that we may want to say, hey, let's bring this back again next year.
Definitely in this case for this one.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, the chain of command stuff is well done.
Yeah.
I were a teacher in West Lafayette.
Yeah.
Comforted by its presence in our rules, so.
What is our plan, presuming that we adopt this, to communicate it to all of our teachers and to make sure that it's embedded in their kind of thinking and their community?
So typically, our process is, once a policy's approved, if it's any changes to what we are currently doing, we train our administration the following day. So we have board meeting, and then we always have our admin meeting the next day for us to give updates, and then they take it back and deliver it to their schools, or like our program leaders here will take it and deliver it to their department.
I would be interested in following up in a couple of months, just to make sure, I don't know if it's a new question on the survey to teachers, or some way to test how much awareness there is of this out there.
And I'm looking at, so I know that if it involves a teacher, then, you know, they know what steps to take at the school level. But let's say if it was transportation, then is that a, what is that considered?
That would, yeah, that's a district level that would go to HR.
Okay.
And then I add, I made sure that I was adding in there, if it's a concern with the superintendent, that it goes to the board chair. So make sure that, I think this way everyone has a person to go to if there's a concern about anyone in the district.
And so, like, step two, under first level, the building principal shall note the date and time that the report is received. If it's a district-level complaint?
That would be HR.
Right, but it's not, like, those steps aren't laid out here in the context of.
Right. I just, I didn't lay it out specifically to, in, in the idea that whoever is kind of the first-level person would carry it through where it says building level. What we could add there is just say, you know, if you are the first-level responder, you know, you will follow the directions that are outlined to the principals.
Yeah. I just wanted folks outside of the school building?
Yeah.
To have some reassurance of what those steps look like for them.
Okay.
Does our, our next step is to move to approve this? Is that?
Uh, next step would be to put this out for public comment.
Got it.
And then next month, we'd approve it.
Okay.
Correct.
That's the only one that we were?
That's the only one that's up for first level, up for first-level review.
Right.
A motion to? A motion to move it up.
To the public comment.
Yeah. Or move the whistleblower policy to public comment.
No, he was bad.
I get a motion.
I move to move this, to move the whistleblower policy forward for public comment.
I get a second.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
To public comment.
And then final action item for the board this eve, oh, actually, sorry, there's Code of Ethics for educators, or Code of Ethics for board members. In your folders, you have a copy of the Code of Ethics for board members. If all board members could take a moment and sign those, and if you will pass those to me, we will get those hands and sign in your red folder. And the final action item is our last big batch of policies for the board to approve. They've been out for public comment. I do want to say we did have two policies out for public review that we are going to put up for approval next month, and those are our equity, our board's equity policy as well as their controversial issues. We just wanted to give a little more time to solicit input and make sure our staff is fully trained on those policies before we put those out for approval. So I just want to make that note. So were there any questions or comments or changes recommended to that last batch of policies? These were our student policies.
Did we receive any public feedback or comments on, okay, so they say these were what we saw before.
Yeah, okay. All right. Comments, I move to pass the policies that were up for public review.
You move or you ask for a motion?
Which ones are they?
Okay.
I move, well, he, oh, you make, you make a motion to approve.
Right. I moved to approve, and I'm confused, that the policies that are up for public review are approved.
Are approved. Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Policies that have been up for public review, pass.
Includes our action items for this evening. Chairman Hurdens.
All right. This month, the board was provided monthly school reports as informational only, those are included in the packet for review. We also have future dates listed on the agenda for upcoming meetings, trains, retreats. Any questions or feedback from the board on the future dates?
No.
Nope. All right. That's it. Thank you all for joining us this evening. Meeting is adjourned at 8:00 p.m.